I don't know, eight to ten policies to review, some of the things we've looked at multiple times. But are we starting with the public participation? We will. I think this one may be a shorter conversation and we'll move into AIs. I know we have people here to add to our artificial intelligence conversation. We'll start with policy zero one six seven point three, public participation at board meetings. I believe this came up because we've had some discussions about maybe some word wording that's in this related to the amount of time maybe the public can participate at board meetings. Is that why Stacy is this why this is on?
It came out of the executive committee.
Okay.
I don't know why it came up and they placed it at the front end too.
Okay. So Nicole, I may defer to you since you're the only one on the executive committee.
Right, um, I think it just seemed like that was something that the board as a whole wanted to discuss. Just, yeah, there were some recent things that came up that it was like, well, maybe we need to relook at that. So I think that's kind of the gist.
I kind of remember conversations about whether we needed to have something in there about if there are more than or if there's one topic someone speaks on this. Anyone want to add anything back to that?
Maybe in a group, probably just one.
One representative.
One representative for one group.
Yeah, that's something I mean, we've discussed in years past. We've never, to my knowledge, implemented that. John, do you know if we've ever actually implemented that? To your knowledge, okay.
I think the challenge in that would be like if there's a group of people that come, but they haven't organized themselves, like maybe there's twenty people who want to speak on homecoming or, you know, and they haven't, they don't know each other necessarily, then how do we regulate that would be my question?
Or the flip side of that, which do you want to penalize groups that come and have an organize, have organized their comments so that they're not repetitive? And limit the number of speakers, all of RAM, I think that was a good example relatively recently. And, you know, I suppose, of course, if they know in advance, there's only going to be one speaker on the topic, they can deal with it, but there are two sides to it. Unless it's a problem, there's future.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really see any point in changing the policy. I think it's worked well my entire time on the board. I think the president should have the restriction to controlled floor. The, uh, the, we've always said thirty minutes for public commentary. Some have chosen to go over, some stay under. We've, I mean, I think, I think the more you put in policy and take away out of the president's hand of actually running the meeting, I think the more problems you create. I can't think of any instances. I mean, we've probably had nine years on the board. I don't know, half dozen meetings where we've had a full house. One or two a year, max. So I think we can live with that. Personally. So I, I, I'm not sure what's on the agenda. I don't know what the executive board is thinking, but I, I like it being more flexible.
I'm good with it as is.
I'm okay.
I'm certainly good with it.
So we both love.
The only thing I noticed, John, you said was thirty minutes, but we don't have that in the policy. I mean, I don't know if we need to add that, but I'm not in favor of limiting any public participation in any way. I mean, I guess more than the five minutes. But I did notice you said the thirty minutes, but we haven't, we don't have that in policy. That if it runs over, you know, I know there have been times I do remember at the very beginning when I joined the board, there were times when we shortened. Does that need to be?
We've tried it. I mean, I don't know if that's just been the past practice. I don't know where that holds, but that's always been my term. I mean, we used to have two commentary sessions. We used to have one beginning one that both were both at thirty minutes.
Right.
Um, and then, I don't know, what, six, seven years ago, we eliminated the second one. I, I, again, I mean, I think it's just a rule of thumb the president uses to you not be here for thirty hours listening to commentary.
Right.
If you wanted something in writing, I mean, I, I just, I'd hate for someone then to say, well, you said thirty minutes and you went over and you allowed them to speak or you didn't allow them to speak. I mean, any particulars, I don't, I think it needs to be fairly fluid.
And I get, I just want to make sure that everyone is good with, like, we just had the RAM come and had a lot of speakers, which is I think perfectly fine, but there was a lot of discussion about. So I just want to verify that if another group comes and they organize and they have twenty speakers for five minutes each and it's all on the same topic, everyone is good. Because that's what we're talking about now, I guess.
The president could say you should get a minute. I think it would be fine.
The thirties or twelve signed up allocated or fifteen signed up.
And so, I mean, if people are going to come in that manner, I think they have to realize that they're not going to run the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm, I agree. Because I, I mean, I don't want to spend here two hours listening. I mean, the president should be able to at least be able to.
I mean, COVID meetings, I can remember, we've had, I think, fifteen, sixteen folks and we'd cut them down to three minutes typically, or I would. And I don't think that ever created a problem. And we have had other people that we were allowed to go overtime. I think that's even more problematic. If I had to do things again, I would probably have been more strict on the time limit.
So do you want to put like one group gets a total of thirty minutes or do you want to just leave it as is, which I?
I think the presidents will be able to make such decisions.
Any other comments on this?
Uh, yeah, I like having it in the president's hand, so.
To make that decision.
To make that decision because it really is kind of a, on an as need basis. But Krista, I mean, are you feeling like we need to have the thirty minutes in there?
No, I mean, I don't like any restrictions. Again, I find if someone, a group comes in, because I feel like that's our, that's their right, the public's right to come and speak. So I wouldn't put any limit, limitation on it.
That's correct. The public has no right to come and speak, except in situations when it's statuteally given. They have the right to come and observe and make remarks. That is their rights. So let's not be a, let's not disseminate misinformation responding to legitimate issues. So there is no right. Now, that being said, school corporations obviously are a target of legislative interest. So before final action can be taken on any matter in a school board meeting, there has, a final action being defined as a vote, but has to be an opportunity for public input on that matter. So if you, for instance, in an open forum or in the president's presentation, if you come upon a matter and the board wants to take final action on that in a substantive manner, I don't mean it's, well, let's refer this to our policy committee for their input. That's more of a procedural, non-substantive final action, if you will. But if they want to take final action, there has to be the opportunity for public input before they take that final action. They can still do it. And I, I think I've had one or two occasions since that statute, to point that out to the board. If a matter arises, it was not on the agenda. Now, if the matter's on the agenda, it's fair game. You have your public comment at the start of the meeting. You're okay.
Now, we just add, I think the general trend across the state is to reduce commentary times to three minutes. And also to reduce public commentary time to agenda items. I think RCS has been very flexible in allowing five minutes.
Even taking it farther than that and the hell, you can even have a limit, limit it to patrons in your district.
Oh, yeah, correct. And we've, we've never even really limited it to, uh, agenda items. And we've, we've had an open forum for the public. And I think I would continue to do that practice, but I think it, it is a little bit out of the norm from maybe what we're seeing across the state. So I think in a way that's a good thing for our public.
So any interest in adding the thirty minutes that Michael mentioned or not, or we're good with the way it stands?
I'm good with the way it currently is. We're talking about limiting.
I'm sorry.
We're talking about allowing a window.
Yes.
You're saying it's the president's.
To leave it as is and the president has
authority.
Authority on what, yeah, on if there's a limitation lower than five minutes and if they can, you know, collectively go over thirty minutes.
I would like there to be just a definitive, like discretion within a.
We've always said thirty minutes, kind of, but it's not written anywhere. Karen or Kristen, I think, would like it in the policy to say thirty minutes. And I'm like.
Actually, no, I said, I don't want that.
You don't want that? Oh, you don't? Okay.
Right.
But it is, it's been, we don't have in there that says it's up to, it's the president's discretion either. I don't know if that needs added.
That's a Robert's rule. You know, they're, they're not substantive. They're just procedural and can be waived. Then put that in the, then if we're all concise, I think there's need to put that the president has the.
What about, I don't know if you guys brought this up, if we have a group that's going to speak, we know ahead of time. Should we take liberty to reach out to that group and say, you guys can have fifteen minutes if you were going to have three speakers and one person can speak, or does that kind of?
We kind of talked about that at the beginning, the fact that some groups may come and not be organized. And then it kind of puts it, I mean, if I were in a group and this were a limitation, then I would not organize myself and say, hey, we're all we're all separate.
The simple way to avoid that, if the group is really attuned to how you operate, would be to request time on the agenda, also give identifying the issue they wish to speak about. So you're not blindsided somewhat as you were with RAM, because you weren't really quite sure what that was going to be about. And.
Now, in their defense, I believe they've requested to be on the agenda multiple times and were not granted, so.
I don't know who controls that, but that, that would, to me, would be the appropriate way because, you know.
But a request doesn't guarantee that they're allotted on the agenda.
Pardon?
Just because the group would request to be on the agenda, we, I mean.
The executive committee decides that.
They, they, I mean, they're often told, would be told no.
Can they make a request? To have a, well, it's like, I could, so I think there's two different things when we talk about groups coming in. Some like kind of an outside group that Ray would come here and some RAM was like that gray area of, you know, there's sort of a hierarchy to talk to Dr. Wright first, which could lead to an agenda item, but also, you know, I feel like that directive should come from him a little bit.
Stephen, it's more.
I don't know, I'm just, you know, the, so I see that as two different things.
Erin.
Ian, could you move your mic up a little closer? Probably couldn't hear you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I need. No, I was just saying, I could see like two, like if it's a group that maybe has already been talking to administration, you know, that should you know, I feel like Dr. Wright should ask and request that maybe on their behalf a little bit, but then there's some of the community groups that like don't really have a connection that would come to public commentary, but do they have the ability to request something on the agenda? It's like a slippery slope. I don't know. But I, I could also see not thirty minutes, but women in public commentary to an hour. Go ahead.
Since we're discussing public commentary, um, if I could add something that you may have already discussed this previously joining. When we have incidents such as at our last board meeting during public commentary, could we, could we change our preambles on a, a forwarded X amount of minutes? Anything that is completely directed at anyone, you will be stopped immediately and your, your participation will be discontinued.
Yeah, it does say.
Do you think we have that in the policy?
Says they're not, comments are not to be personally directed or abusive. But then I guess the question is, is that a warning? And then let them can, like nine times out of ten, it's gonna keep up the list real quick, but.
Say it's discretion of the chair. I mean, we're talking all these things. We have a chairman to run the meeting.
Okay.
And they can stop commentary, they can control commentary. I mean, we can't, we want to put all these little rules in and it just complicates everything. You, you're running a meeting, run it as you see fit. If you think you need to stop a speaker, stop a speaker. No one's gonna, there's no, there's no remedy for them. I mean, we list, the chair runs the meeting.
Yeah, I get that. I was looking at it in the sense of having someone complain if they felt like they, someone else got a little leeway and they didn't.
Our policy already says exactly that. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate the person's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed. You know, so we're already covered. I feel like there's already something to be prepared.
My comment was not solely based upon what happened at the last meeting. It's something that I'm going to bring up sometime that, but it just, you know, the last meeting, it triggered the whole time line again.
And this is kind of a side note, but I would like to have the timer back up on the screen. We started that and I know Cindy keeps time and then, um, which is good, but I liked it. Yeah, because it gives them a visual reminder.
Good idea.
And then you were out one day and I don't know if it was Alex in the back. Maybe, so, yeah, he's like, but, and I'm like keeping it on my phone.
Yeah, that, that's not as good.
He's like, and then I'm like, hey.
So Alex, is that something that could be added?
We can certainly, if we want to, if we'll make such a practice, if we did have a timer that did appear on the screen, it's to be removed at one point as well. But if we need something more of a subtle from the back, like whether it's a floodhag or whatever we need to do, we can certainly accommodate as such that a way it's not as obvious there in the front if we need.
Well, it got to be a little bit of a joke when we had the public hearings on the wheel tax. And we were using, I think it was one of the members' phones, it sounded harsh, ring alarm ring. It was finally, it was humorous, but maybe the people that were being cut off, and so you.
Yes, or maybe it is that, just you, you have your alarm. Does it go off or do you?
Timer on the screen helps the person talking, I think they need to see, I mean.
It just goes off. I just say something when they have a minute left, so.
Almost every school board, I mean, many, you see it all the time. I don't think it's unusual.
Okay, so Alex should work on getting it added to the screen.
Yeah, we've got that ready.
Okay, thank you.
So we're landing on discretion of the chair.
Okay, so any changes? We kind of, it's a good conversation, right? Are we, everyone comfortable with the public participation at board meetings, policy one sixty seven point three, keeping as is, no changes? Okay, we will move on. Next, policy seventy five forty point oh nine, artificial intelligence. We have looked at this policy previously. Um, we had recommendations from Neola, which were vague and short, which I don't know, Stacy, why is that? That, I mean, typically Neola kind of guides us or gives us some boundaries or here's some recommendations and this is so incredibly vague.
I think, um, I, I think there's a couple of things. One, I think there's no, um, Indiana code that directs that. And two, I think it leaves it up to the, uh, or administrative guidelines to kind of implement the process or.
It's evolving.
And it is changing. So by the time you approve any kind of policy, it's going to be late. I mean, it's, it's going to be outdated, so.
Okay, so let's, I know we have, um, we've received some feedback on the tech team, maybe they want to speak. And it give us some recommendations. Do we have a community member, Jason, Jason Blanca is here, who's giving some recommendation too, but.
When it comes to artificial intelligence, I certainly believe the direction we need to move is to remove the discussion of policy. But the district can rather implement administrative guidelines in this purpose, because as Mr. Mox referred to, because it's rapidly growing so much and so much changes with education, the technology go hand in hand as well. We need to have something in place that we can change and manipulate as we see fit. We're not saying that we're stuck in stone with a specific way that we can evolve along with it as it continues to grow as well. Plus, we're not limiting ourselves from an educational standpoint as well. So meeting with the blended learning team, the department of technology, and then also the feedback we've received from the public one of the prior meetings, we believe this direction moving forward is going to be much better for the corporation. And especially when it comes down to giving the student the opportunity to have that education and use it of artificial intelligence, but also wrapping around those guardrails and those safe, uh, safe places for them to utilize that in educational bands.
So are you recommending we have no policy whatsoever or we have the one that Neola recommended that's vague and?
I think if you're wanting to acknowledge that Richmond Community Schools is looking to utilize the use of artificial intelligence, it's a wonderful policy for that. But when it comes to establishing any guidelines or expectations of that such, there's nothing there except for the cross referencing, which is great. But for, you know, the standard folk, the public, you know, how are we choosing to implement this? How is the student utilizing it? When is it okay to use, use AI, not use AI? I think that's where those guidelines being put in a place for Richmond Community Schools, for educators and for our students is going to be more effective manner for us moving forward at this point in time. Not to say that in the future, as this artificial intelligence continues to grow, that should we see a reason to implement a policy that we can't go that direction, but I think we're putting the cart for the horse here when it comes to doing policy versus.
Do we have any administrative guidelines started or we have a?
That's what we've, uh, those proposed that we have handed to you this morning.
Okay.
Generally, generally for administrative guidelines, it's related to a policy. So, um, I would, I don't know if we have any administrative guidelines that don't have a policy.
Right.
Uh, and the other thing I would say is a lot of the policies, there's a charge in there from the board that, um, a charge to the superintendent to create administrative guidelines. And then this policy is.
So your recommendation would be to maybe add that.
Yeah, a lot, and, and a lot of those policies, it is, it's a charge from the board to the, to the superintendent to create administrative guidelines.
So compilation of what I'm hearing from you guys is keep it basic, but have a reference to the guidelines. Is that kind of what you're saying?
If that's the, if that's the expectation there to have a policy setting for that charge, absolutely. I believe that's going to be our best way moving forward with this.
And I like that first part and then, you know, remove the crossed out part. That's already in.
Right.
But I, I don't, I don't think this needs to have the, you know, violation of this policy. I think that needs to be crossed out too, because that we wouldn't dictate that anyway. Violation of what, you know, because it's not a, or under the administrative guidelines than the policy. But I think it would be good to keep that first paragraph, that first sentence and then lead into the creation of administrator guidelines.
So if we were to go this route, I would still want to hear, um, from our audience members, what these guidelines should look like and what we should be looking at. Or if they think that that's a good idea or not, so. What do you guys think?
Have you seen the guidelines? They were a part of the process.
Yeah, the guidelines that you see there.
But the blended learning team was a part of this process. They have taken samples from other local area school districts and corporations as well to put these into place. So in collaboration with them, the department of technology, this is our proposal then in that of favor versus a policy.
Yeah, we, we fully favor guidelines over policy for, for the enforcement part of it. Um, we've reached out to about six different corporations, friends of ours in the in tech community and had conversations with them. And what you have before you came up with based on those conversations.
Yeah, we saw that most people, uh, we try to pick the people that are ahead of the game, like, kind of like we are, and to see where they are. They would look at Neola at your policy, which then references to the guidelines, which are much more adaptable. Also remember too, you already, like, I think plagiarism is probably the thing that everybody's worried about. You already have that. And so that would still fall under that anyway, I think. Um, so this just kind of outlines it. We like this because it's proactive. It shows that we're using AI as a tool. It's only a part of the greater whole. Um, so I think that that makes it valuable in there and it's, um, it's a very positive looking document.
And when it references in this, the student consequences outlined in the student handbook, is that go back to plagiarism? Reference of?
Now, we highlighted it, um, it won't be on the printed out sheet, but on the electronic copy, we've highlighted the sections that will need to be updated because it's like specific to school board code. Um, and then there were a couple down there at the bottom that said something about teacher enforcement. So we didn't know if you wanted to keep that part and we definitely need to update the board policy to match ours wherever this would fall. For, for your teacher guidance, your student guidance, that's what Jeremy's in reference to. Uh, we have gone ahead and updated where those cross references would be for the specific board policies tied to Richmond Community Schools. Now, the other section there is under the student guidance, then the approval student use of AI tools. Um, just the discussion surrounding, you know, do we have that set where it is with teacher approval? Is that, you know, per the class for the assignment, is it spelled out in the syllabus of when AI is okay to utilize in that particular course? Those are certain things that we'll also want to consider with, with those guidelines as well.
I, I'm just speaking out loud here. As AI is evolving, I'm assuming we're going to start getting classes about AI. Is that, is that my correct on this? With, we're teaching AI.
You have that federal thing that's coming. I don't think it'll be a separate standalone. I think it'll be more embedded into on how to, how AI influences each different part. And so I think that that's why that teacher control is really important. As an English teacher, there are times when I would want to use it for brainstorming. There are times when I would want to use it for editing, but there would never be a time where I want it to be an answer.
Right, much safer.
Right. So I think that that is probably, and I know they're working on that. They've had a lot of meetings this, uh, just this past week about that. But, um, and who knows? I don't predict what happens like from there, but, um, I would see it embedded rather than standalone, because imagine how crazy that standalone would be, because it's all about how and when you implement it, so.
Right, and it's changing so fast. Of course, syllabus or curriculum would never be up to date. You know, of course, I think part of our job is then working with teachers and students to bridge that gap and say, when is AI, you know, when, when do you think it's acceptable? Here's how we can do that. There are tools out there that are like, there's one called AI trust you, where the teacher puts in the assignments, here's the areas where AI is acceptable. And the student can say, here are the areas where AI assisted me in this assignment. So those things are already out there, but that's the kind of stuff that we can then teach with or show people how to utilize.
And you also do it through your citations, just like when we were in college, you had to cite where you got your information. You can cite AI as well. Um, one of the things we have to remember too, because we use Magic School, the safety is really the biggest thing, even more so the plagiarism. And so we have those built in levels of safety with the information coming in and the information going out. And the teachers and administrators being able to monitor that interaction with AI. So that was a really good decision for the past two years that has really helped us serve our teachers, our staff and our students. It's really not just teachers, we've seen a lot more administrative use of that too, to protect that data. So that's really important.
Um, I see a call out for her, obviously not sharing P I I, P H I. Do we give examples to the students and teachers? I mean, I know there's a lot of adults that don't know combination items that.
No, we have to, so the, for our insurance through technology, we have to do all these ongoing trainings and there's this whole series that Alex could speak to about that. But it's really good to watch these videos and it's about school, but it's also about your personal life too, about don't fall for the, like, a lot of phishing, a lot of email, a lot of don't give out this, there, there's a whole series about that that we have to do, yeah. And, and that actually comes through that professional development process. So whether it's through yearly, annual training, which Jeremy's referencing to, which is our number four series, so where we cover cybersecurity, we'll start implementing AI into that as well. That's also as part of quarterly training we do through the state of Indiana for a lot of our federal, our grants that we get for cyber. Um, but just that ongoing professional development with teachers and staff as well about that PII and also teaching students what to put into AI. That's where having those guardrails in place, pointing them towards Magic School. It's got those safety guards in place to prevent them from putting information they shouldn't. We explain it a lot of times as everyone wants to teach their kid how to swim, if you do a pool, you don't teach them how to swim in the ocean. And so that's what we're doing there. They're in a protected environment where they can learn how to do it. And then those skills will be directly applicable to the things they use outside of high school when they go out to the world.
I just have one question. Um, regarding the, the policy work. You said there were changes in other policies that need to be made. Are those technical changes?
I, I would see that. I mean, really, you need to tie in artificial intelligence into those existing policies if that's what we're cross, cross referencing. At that point, um, really, you know, no different than as we referenced, like plagiarism has always been established. How we utilize information and technology nowadays in our acceptable use agreement, we're just attaching the words artificial intelligence to that at this point. It's like a calculator. If, you know, if we, everybody's seen a calculator cheating when it first came out, but now that artificial intelligence is, you know, coming to the horizon. It's being put under that same microscope, but however, it's, it's no different than how we use a calculator nowadays. It's a tool. But how it's being utilized and how we've established the correct uses of that tool is what will carry us forward.
Just, you know, being myself, um, I just want to make sure that, you know, someone going to bring these policies. Um, just, you know, being myself, um, I just wanna make sure that, you know, someone gonna bring these policies. I mean, if, if you're recommending we change language to make all this flow or be more specific. I wanna know, is someone gonna bring us all these policies next, next month with those changes?
And like, let's say under your plagiarism, does it say like, uh, from an article or from a book or from a movie or from a podcast? Because if it just says plagiarism, then I don't know that you're gonna have to go through and do that because AI is just a form of information. Should we already have that?
And that would be my recommendation, that we don't actually alter any policies to be AI specific or include. Uh, yeah, I would just, but I'd like someone to take a peek to make sure that we don't need to, like Mr. Hill says, add that we've left, you know, if we've, we've line itemed everything out, then oh, we have to add one more. Um.
We could take a look at that, Stacy, at the next policy. Maybe add plagiarism. That's a good idea, John.
So just be consistent.
And this is a working document. This has not been set in stone to say this is what's moving forward. But these are, this is simply a proposal there for, for the starting conversation.
And I think that looks great.
Yeah, it looks great.
So as far as the policy would be concerned, we do need to add maybe after the first paragraph that the superintendent has authorized to create administrative guidelines or?
As well as board policies as interpreted to be, or application by administrative guidelines or something like that.
That would be Stacy after the second, right before the omitted line.
Right before the amended one?
Yes.
Okay.
Right after policies.
Gotcha. So we're deleting everything after that?
And then we're gonna add, well, let's see, are we, let me see this.
Kim suggested deleting that.
Violate, yeah, I would, I would.
Yes, so that last paragraph deleted and we'd add where the superintendent um, be. Uh, will oversee or charge to create administrative guidelines.
We really need to say that in an assumption.
I think it needs to be said.
I kind of like to see that. Uh, another policy got brought up to me. And I looked at our policy and couldn't see anything. And then I didn't say really there's an admin guideline.
Okay.
But it'd be nice, if you like.
You know what direction we've moved in.
Right.
Oh, I also still wanna hear from Jason.
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you all. Um, for those who don't know, I think about AI in the higher ed space um, more than I, and then as a parent, I think about it with my kids. And I appreciate the work that the team is doing and there's a lot that's going on and changes you've all been talking about. I'm in favor of the administrative policy because I think it recognizes the constant change that we're experiencing. I would encourage as you edit the policy to add a definition for AI. My experience is there is significant difference in perspective on what AI means um, and what falls under there. To make it simple, I would suggest we could potentially use the definition of the Department of Ed. The US Department of Ed is referencing from a United States code. So just as an idea on how to do that, I also completely agree with removing student consequences from the policy and relying on others unless we want to fully flesh out those expectations. Thinking of guidelines, um, I think there should also be guidelines added related to teacher and staff usage as well as um, administrative usage for AI. Uh, there are potentially purpose requirements that the district would have and that may need discussion with teachers on whether or not teachers can submit student assignments to AI. Um, from an input and a grading perspective without student consent, um, unless it is a RCS licensed and managed product completely that may not be intuitively understood. I think that ties into my third concept is my experience and my perception is that we have significant differences in expectations around AI depending on who you are and potentially even what generation you come from. The example that resonates for me from other forms of tech is I have a brother who's about fourteen years younger than I am. And his experience and perception of social media, Facebook, Instagram and others is completely different than mine. Um, just based on that small age difference and my, as I have conversations with college students, as I have conversations at home and as I have conversations with peers and friends, I think we need to have different expectations around it. And I think some of those are changing on us. For example, um, I don't think it's possible for our students to write a paper without AI impacting it since we provide Google Suite and Google has embedded AI in Google Suite. So the spell check, grammar checks and type head functions inside Google Suite would be under the definition of AI that the US Department of Ed references in the US code.
Those sources will typically identify that the AI component in there, at least in screenshots I see.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
They typically, those sources typically will identify the AI, the AI component of, of whatever, you know, if you Google up a question.
I, I believe that's the case if I'm searching, but the spell check that is natively in both Microsoft Word and Google Suite today would be, have components that would fall under a definition of AI because of how they have expanded that. So maybe there's something that in the K twelve versions that allow that to be pulled out, but when I look at it from a broader perspective. And I, so I think I have some concerns just as the art, those in the tech world are making changes on us. How do we guide there? Um, and I think I would, I guess the other piece there is that I think it requires training. Um, and what is that ethical piece? And the Secretary of Education and her recent Dear Colleague letter on AI specifically called out that one of the key parts of K twelve and related to AI is teaching at ethical use. Um, and I think as we consider policies and as we consider it, that's a challenge we all have, but also I, as a parent, I would ask for collaboration clarity so that we're talking the same language at home on what that ethical use is like.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Any questions for Jason? Any responses, I guess, from the tech team on some of the things, some of the thoughts?
Yeah, in the active guidelines you have there, there is a definition at the very beginning about AI and like that. That you can decide that there is a definition. There's also a student section and a staff section. Um, so those are both listed in there. The ethical guidelines is a good point. That's an ongoing thing. I don't know that you put that in guidelines. I mean, when we talk about like a health curriculum, you know, there's a million things that go into there, but you don't specify those out. But I mean, it's a very important. Also like you think about natural resources and things like that and that impact that AI has and that, I think that's important too, but I wouldn't put that um, in the guidelines. So um, I feel like that stuff uh, is in there. Also, AI is impacting everything. Any kind of search that you do, if you're just using a Google search, that's using the power of AI. So that's already in there as well. So that, that's correct as well. I mean, AI, and that's why I think it's important to go the route that you're going with the very broad. In the, we go with the guidelines from specifics. So we set the policy very broad because you don't, that's gonna be so hard to do. So that's a much more flexible. I like the way you're going there.
I guess my, I guess my only ethical question is, is that, and I'm seeing this across the nation. Um, I can't remember, I saw a story where AI is teaching our kids and not the teacher. So there are classrooms that are, I'm seeing that are impacted where they are now putting fifty people in a classroom where AI is teaching the assignment.
So one of the things that you guys should definitely celebrate is, um, approximately ten years ago, I got into this role and from the beginning, RCS has gone with the blended learning model and I think that's more important today than ever before. Um, the teacher is always going to be super important. Can you imagine at, at that age, sitting there with fifty people learning online? What would we be doing? We would not be learning. Um, learning would not be in our top ten list. Thank you for bringing that thought. So it's super important. Um, and it's super important for the teachers to try and do it themselves and model that administration as well. Um, all of the administrators across the district had a training last week, um, here with Mad at School about how to use student rooms to kind of balance and do those things. So that is super important. Um, there's literally like, you guys brought up so many good points and that's why you wanna go guidelines. Because you could never, you could never policy your way through all of that stuff. So I think it's really good. It's a great conversation. Um, and I think this gets you where you can be.
And if you wanna see teacher use, we would invite you to set up a time with us. We have classrooms that are effectively using AI with students right now. Um, and there's so much teacher input. Um, and uh, we work with the teacher. We go in and model for the teacher. We're there while it happens. And then we say, hey, let's go debrief this and see all of the great um, data that we got from our students. Uh, the last example, we had a, a school corporation from Mount Vernon, the one down by Posey County, down by the river, that came to visit because they wanted to hear our AI story. Richmond is kind of being talked about across the state for what we've done in terms of AI policy. Uh, we took them to a fifth grade classroom. They saw kids implement or dump in their writing into an AI tool, Magic School. And they saw that in four to five seconds, every student in the room got quality feedback on their writing. And then the teacher could go from that point and say, hey, here are the kids with lower scores. I'm gonna pull them up and talk with them. Every other kid could work to improve their writing and put it back through the AI tool immediately and get that feedback, something that's not possible. One on thirty, but was possible when you have AI as a thought partner and um, co-teacher in there.
Sounds like, sounds like a marketing and selling point for us to make a video on AI.
And this, and this team, this team, they're, they are the pioneers and they truly are the trailblazers here at the schools when it comes to implementing artificial intelligence here at the school district. They have led so much professional development and guidance for instructors of how to efficiently utilize the classroom and the proper ways to use in the classroom. And then also that be trickling down there to students with the instructors then taking that lead, utilizing it in the classroom, showing them how to do it with Magic School. That's where you wanna have those limits of where can we use it at? So we actually go ahead and we make sure that students are only utilizing um, approved artificial intelligence tools. So that being Magic School itself or if it's Diffit, so like Gemini, Chat GPT, that's all blocked for our students. We've not implemented efficient training for our instructors to utilize those artificial intelligence tools here in the district. So we wanna ensure that students are only being exposed to that, that instructors have been efficiently trained on. And this team, the department of technology, we can't even be able to take kudos for this. This team is, is the group that has led the way.
Yeah, no, we, we got a little snapshot.
Yeah, last year, but last year revisited.
Well, that too, yeah, but just recently in one of our superintendent updates, uh, kinda like, hey, Rich, our team's rocking it.
Well, I wanna specify, just even in elementary, with wisdom as you, I'm sure, it's hard and it's hard for our um, students. And so in elementary last year, we have not done it yet this year. It's only fifty-six, that's in your school. They have to research and find out about the different characters that, that goes through their modules. And it was easy to, instead of let them like go research on the worldwide web, which is scary as it is, put them in a room and they get to talk to a character chatbot. So we taught the teachers, here's what you can put in there for them to research about. And the kid could talk to them. So they learned about Alvin, Ally, Ally, um, Rosa Parks, all these different people that they needed to write about for their end of module task, but they didn't have to go anywhere else to do it. And they were in the perimeter of that room, which was great. And the kids loved it.
So instead of having a, a large language model that's open to anything, which could be a bunch of misinformation, the teacher can attach the information that he wants that character to pull from. So then they're getting quality source information that's coming back from that bot so that they're not just getting anything that they find. And he brought up a great point about grading too. We're using this for feedback. We're not using this for grading. So in that room of thirty, the kids write it, it's a rubric one to ten. I drop my writing in and scores it. It tells me all the pros and the cons and it gives me a number and it tells me. Now I can go back in and edit my writing and then I can re-drop it in and get a new score and see if I give up. And I do that right there in class. That would take multiple days for that teacher to be able to give back the first round of feedback and then the second round as well. But in that test, classroom test, they were able to do that multiple times within the room. And so we also look at accessibility. Um, most of you probably had parents at home that when you were stuck, they could help tutor you and things like that. Now we can create rooms where if they don't have that at home, if parents are working, if they don't have that ability, they can get that help at home too within that room. And then you can see when they come back. They can say, hey, I tried this last night. It wouldn't work. You can go right through their chat and see what they were doing and try to help them. So that when they go home and do it on their own the next time, you can see it. So if you do come by, make sure we show you some rooms. You can see how students are interacting and how they're using it. Because it's really interesting. You actually can learn from it rather than just getting answers from that part super cool.
Are you aware of any license agreements the corporation has entered into that are with, I guess I would say, AI platforms per se? Are, are, are we dealing with licenses like we might have in place that have within their product and embedded AI component? Is it more the latter than the former? Because if there are licenses, I'm starting to see it in my area where this is an area of intellectual property that is really, really ripe for litigation, if you can imagine, you know? Plus it's hard to claim proprietary rights to a, it's fundamentally what is out there already in the general public. That you're just providing a more efficient video of access.
Yeah, so really the Magic School thing works as a super insurance policy for us from the liability side because it's protecting what's, we're taking what's coming in and we're filtering it through an educational lens. And we're protecting it so that the students, personal stuff doesn't get out. Uh, but proprietarily, that is a whole, like if you look in the music industry and you can create a song with Suno or something like that.
Yeah.
Well, they get, so we, that's way out of our jurisdiction. They can pick ones to battle that one out, but.
Well, I think what's important for us is to continue to educate our educators, our fellow educators on not putting that proprietary information to things that aren't secure like Magic.
You know, so like, yeah, Alex was talking about that. So if they're gonna use Google Gemini, which is a great product, but we can't see anything that they're doing there. There's no safety on that backend for us. So we shut that off for students. Not that we don't want them to have the power of AI, but we want them to have the power of AI safely. So no, no slant against Google on that one, but it's just much safer for our students and staff uh, to use Magic School than it is to be out in the wild. Plus, that's that whole whole person's motion, right?
And Ron, I think that to your question, I think that Magic School looks more like a digital license per. And so it's a subscription format, just like some of our other platforms are. So it's, it's looked at least to now to be fairly similar to what we have in other areas of programs. It's just that it, it has different capabilities. So from at least, they aren't jumping on the bandwagon yet as far as um, companies as to making it look like what you're seeing in some of those other areas yet.
All right. In my field, we're hearing horror stories of briefs that to appellate courts citing cases that didn't exist or don't exist, you know?
Just to wrap up, so, so I think we're comfortable with the policy that we, we talked about.
Other than, do we wanna add the definition of AI to the policy that just he recommended?
That's what, that's what Jason's in, is in reference to. Now on that guidelines, there is that definition made available to that. If we need to add that on to the policy itself as well, to just kinda tie those two together, we certainly can.
I know we have some definitions, like we're gonna look at attendance today where we have several different definitions, how we define words. Should AI be defined in our policy or does it limit us because it's gonna be changing?
So that's my biggest concern. Like, you know what AI looks like today? You know what your cell phone looked like three phones ago. You know what your phone's gonna look like three.
Voter rates, remember that?
And it just changes so fast. Like, that's the part that worries me.
Right. We may have to continue to go back.
We just talked about, we had that A guideline to be flexible. Um, so I'm thinking of that. Um, my other question is, so when did this go live? It's an AG that like Jason and our public can look at it. What's the timeline for that?
That's all I ask. So, um, so.
So is that like a month or?
Oh, I don't think it'll take that long. So they've given, I mean, all we need to do is tweak this a little bit so it, the format looks more like our administrative guideline.
Cause there's no voter and it's just.
Right. And then, and then we take the cabinet and the cabinet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So within.
And then we can make a, I mean, and then you can make changes within a week or two. I mean, it doesn't take.
So what's the next, when's the next board meeting? September twenty?
But these all go to board meeting at all.
So we would approve the policy changes we've discussed and then they'll work on the, so Jason could expect to see a, uh, AI guideline, let's say within a month.
Typically, board access to administrative guidelines is on an FYI basis.
But they're live, so the public can access.
Yeah.
Through board docs.
Can I just review the changes then?
Yes.
So um, we'll keep the first paragraph intact, the second paragraph. Um, we'll put a period after uh, policies. Then we'll have a, a sentence of some kind of superintendent provide administrative guidelines and then we will take out that last paragraph.
Everyone comfortable with that?
Good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your input and your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, tech team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jason.
We will move on to policy fifty-two hundred attendance. And I believe we were looking at um, possibility, I know that there was some question about habitually absent and habitually through it.
Yeah, so um, so this came up and then uh, Mr. Flint spoke about this and, and wanted a definition of um, habitually absent. And so I looked through and, and Mr. Cross can correct me if I'm wrong. I looked through all of the uh, linked um, Indiana code that's at the end and there are a lot. Um, and I couldn't find any habitually absent. They don't refer to that at all as habitually absent. And then I believe I attached the Indiana code for you to, to. They don't refer to that at all as habitually absent. And then I believe I attached the Indiana code for you to to look at. And the, as part of um the the packet that you received. And I believe they just, um, it should be habitually truant is what that refers to.
And it looks like in our post, we currently define chronically absent and we define habitually truant. Never define on the third page versus habitually absent. So if we change the habitually absent to chronically absent.
Well, I think that, I think the Indiana code says it's it's referring to the habitually truant.
So never chronically absent?
Right, it doesn't have chronically absent in that. So the wording is the exact same here as it is in Indiana code, all except for in the policy, it says habitually absent. And in the Indiana code, it says habitually truant.
Okay, we need to make those align.
Yes.
Okay, change habitually, the one, it does say habitually absent one time, so that needs to change to habitually truant.
Talk about chronically absent, is that defined?
Pardon me, chronically. It is defined, yeah.
Okay, so.
Chronically absent is.
So it's just the one spot under, it's actually under habitually truant, that paragraph where the word habitually absent is present. And we would change that to habitually truant.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna look, if you look at the bigger paragraph, it's two lines up, kind of in the middle, a little bit to the right of the middle, it says habitually absent. And change that to habitually truant to reflect the Indiana code.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. They keep saying a habitual truant rather than habitually truant, correct? So I would like to keep.
Okay, so who is a habitual truant?
Okay, we can do that.
Any other questions or comments about the, I I know we we've looked at this prior, yes.
Well, since you gave me more time to look at it.
Okay, that's good. That's what we're here for.
Oh, the second to the last paragraph where it says, no student should be suspended or expelled solely because. Is that new language that it's in green? And is that by state law?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. What exactly is the state law? Is how, if we have a student that's truant ninety days, I think we could claim that that impacts classrooms in a negative way for the other students. And so to not be able to expel that student, I think is a problem.
Would they be expelled not because they're truant, but because their grades probably are suffering? I don't know.
I don't know.
Is that like a loophole?
I think. I I think the property vehicle would have filing information with the prosecutor's office indicating this is probably a case of chance. But that is supplemented. There's just so many potential parallels and ancillary implications of a policy that addresses that in attendance. I mean, I guess I just have a big problem with a student that shows up on day one and comes back for field day. And and it's just, I mean, you you, it's just not right.
That's that's what they put in the law. So one thing that schools can do is, for example, if you have it, you are going to conduct that. After an absence, you're obliged X number of days to complete said assignments, right? It's kinda like to Kristen's point, or I reached out to some colleagues who practiced this and now can't. So how would you hold kids accountable? So if they're not complying with that, with those requirements and those grades and things, and that could be termed insubordination. That could be turned, you know, non-compliance. And so there could be disciplinary measures for non-compliance or insubordination. Because I'm not, because I'm an absence, if I'm not fulfilling my academic obligations, then as an institution, we can, we can. Implement some consequences to that. But the statement said, and I thought I read, it said twenty five, twenty six schooling here. Um, is, if it was that specific, but I couldn't be wrong, but I, when I was reading that, I thought it said that's hardly what they're going to do. They didn't put that in. I did see that in the law for this year.
Well, I think it's very troubling for for students that come to class every day. And I think, I don't know, Ron, it'll just keep us abreast.
I'm just thinking of it like a parent who, of a kindergarten, doesn't get their kids to school ten percent of the time. So they're chronically absent. I wouldn't want them to be expelled. It's not their fault that they're not getting, just because they're not able to be at school. That's.
Well, that I think is covered by the statute.
Right.
I think our discretion is limited there, but I.
But then says no.
John's point's right, there's there are secondary impacts at the classroom, certainly to the teacher.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's not.
I mean, yeah, I I think if a kid makes a good faith effort and is coming and trying, but if it just comes whenever.
I guess the philosophical answer to that is attendance in and of itself is is a rewarding experience. We have to believe that or otherwise our whole mission is.
So I don't know, I guess we'll put it in your hands to work the hound. And I'm not saying it even would happen very often, but I just, it just seems like when you, why would I just not?
Statute used to be defined, and I had to look at it because I think they've been modified, but that if you provide the opportunity to make up the miswork. It would not even be considered as a suspension or expulsion. Now, I think they may have modified that, but you know. That used to be kind of a middle ground to set things over.
Cause in my experience, we have gone a bend over backwards for students in almost every scenario and every case. And I totally believe that we will continue to do such, but that doesn't mean we have to be abused for doing the right thing. And I don't know that even happens, but I just, that language has bothered me.
So we actually still have, I was looking for a new, I saw it not too long ago. It's kinda secondary, but we still have a policy for in-school suspension, which I thought we couldn't do or we don't do. Is that right? Cause we were talking about like Saturday, like I ditched, I do it at Saturday school, we don't do that.
But we do have in-school suspension.
We do.
We just don't have breakfast clubs. Regrets maybe. Look what happened to those guys.
Any other questions about this attendance policy? And Jason, I know you spoke, are you comfortable with our word? You feel like that kinda solves? Thank you for.
I'll make that uh change on page three and have it ready for, and it'd be up for second reading.
Yes, okay, great. Move on past um attendance policy and eighty four, policy eighty four thirty eight. Board construction project review procedures. This is a new policy. And I think we've worked with our consultant. This being developed along with them, some partners. Any questions or comments um or suggestions with this, Stacy?
So I'm, I typed this up and um and one thing I did do was take out LWC and just put it in generic. Um, the architectural firm, just in case, you know, something happened that uh we let somebody else for any kind of reason. That we wouldn't have to rewrite the policy. We try to make everything generic.
I guess, and I appreciate the work. I don't, I I didn't realize this was coming. That might be on me. I uh, I don't, I just don't know where we quote. Need this policy, I guess. It just seems like we've done things so many different ways in my time here. And then I were gonna spell out this way to do things and I don't know that it covers this, but. I think the public works laws are pretty, pretty meticulously constructed, drafted. And the contracts particularly because you basically have a library of base contracts to the AIA that are generally gonna be used. And they they deal with everything here. I think what you need to have or maybe more defined expectations with your AE professionals. Cause conceptually, uh, cause the typical project will go in design phase from. It's conceptual design, the schematic, and then, and at those two points, there should be interaction with stakeholders. Teachers, whatever. We shouldn't have concerns about the the design of the of of an entrance. If it's gonna restrict student access to parts of the building that they need access to, tho- those are the stakeholder issues. That the design professional should be considering in in either or both these conceptual design and schematic. Because in the next phase is construction drawings, which I don't think the board needs to approve. I don't think there's expertise for the board on the, sitting on the board to approve them. But I think there's every bit of a proper role of the board as representative of all stakeholders to be involved in the conceptual and schematic design phases. The construction drawings, bid documents, construction phase. And if you look at your architect's contract, they typically will allocate a portion of their fee. To each phase of those services or they will preclude, it's not a, not unusual for them to preclude any type obligation to be. Or maybe more than one or two site visits during a simple project in the construction phase. Most terrible example that provided recently is you would think replacing the roof would be something that would not require a lot of. Architectural presence during the actual construction stage. Well, that, you would think that, that is always the case. So I agree though, I think we've got a whole body of law that I don't believe in policy that addresses uh board involvement in the construction process. It's there. It's just a matter for the board to assert its role. A, understand its role and then B, assert its role to the limitations that exist for that roles.
I think that part for me that I would like to see, and yeah, I know we talked about this. Um, is the initial like, hey, someone wants to do something, right? They go to Dr. Ray and they go to the admin team. If it's a big project, I feel like there should be a check-in with the board potentially. Cause I feel like, especially with this bond, we've probably wasted a lot of money with things being worked with. The architects that we didn't really know about and maybe we're like on board. But, you know, there's also things we're like, no, right, we we're not interested in that. So to me, like, I see some value in that first piece of how projects are developed. Or how ideas are brought to the admin team, or if it's a board-led.
I think the problem, I think that's a bad example, but I think you can, my dad used to tell me, you can learn as much from a bad example. So good, the trick's just knowing the difference. But uh, we let the uh, we let the financing get a, literally the cart ahead of the horse. And that, cause I went back and watched the YouTube that Alex provided of that March twenty four meeting. And Karen did a good job of listing possible projects, but there was never any understanding of. This really limited scope of the project to justify that level of borrowing, which if you recall, started out at about nine point six or seven million. We got a premium, which is like an advanced interest payment that reduced the amount of our bond issue at one point seven to down around seventeen five. It's still a lot of money to have what I've considered as I've left the whole arena uh for the financing piece. A less than adequately defined project scope.
I think you have all learned. I I would say that this is, just having been here for a while, this is the only bond that has been moved in that way. We have typically gone through bonds with projects in hand at the time in which we take the bond. Example, high school mechanical modernization project, we knew exactly the scope of the project. The board determined how much of it we were gonna do at the time that the bond was determined to take. So this was a very different approach than anything that at least I have seen prior um here. Now, I know other schools do it, like it may work for them. But I would say that typically you have your project set at the time you take a bond. So to set up a policy just on this one incident, I probably would not say that it is absolutely, you know, the way to go. Um, because I think that we generally all can agree that this is not the way that we would like to move in the future. That we would like to have projects in hand at the time that we determine financing.
And I think, but we have to admit that a lot of what grew of our experience and what is driving other school corporations, other public entities, not just school corporations. Is the the ripple effect of Senate Bill One. And uh, to be able to take, but if you look at your project descriptions now, the catchphrase is deferred maintenance. Which is basically a a a euphemism for saying, we're gonna take what normally would be our, in school corporations, our operations monies. And we're gonna supplement them by transferring them to debt service payments for the bonds. And we're seeing that, we're seeing that happen. And that was an expected sequel to Senate Bill One. It doesn't change what Karen says, and still the need, when you're going to the public and asking them to finance a project. To have them have an understanding of what that project consists of. No matter what your, no matter what your relative tax rate is compared to others in the state, we can be as low as we were. But, you know, if it, if the expenditure isn't understood, then I I would argue it's not a valid expenditure.
So in terms of like, forget about the bond, like new projects that come up. Can we use any of this? I mean, some of this, I feel like it'd be driven by the opposite department, right?
I think we have a capital project.
We do. So we have a capital project plan, which is a maintenance plan at this point, until strategic planning occurs. At which point it could change into a facility like strategic plan. And then um we also have, as as Mr. Cross said, procurement requirements and and purchasing laws that are pretty stringent. And so they both are at the federal and the state levels. Um, there are, I mean, there's just a lot of roles to construction in general that. That dictate policy in and of itself that have to be followed. It doesn't mean that the school corporation has to have an extra one. I think that um some of what you are talking about is more expectation and practice and process. And I think that that's something that we we understand and we want to do. Um, but to say that it it's driven by a policy, that might be hard later. Knowing that we don't know yet what next year's gonna look like with all of these changes. I would um, I would kinda hesitate to say that it has to be a policy because even there's a line here that says that. Um, you know, you have to have an open house and invite, like. You might not want an open house for a classroom that you remodeled, like that, it it just creates a lot of extra things that you might not really need. So I would say to worry about expectations and processes rather than practices and policy.
Prior to the, this current bond project, I mean, when we did the work on Ternan, I mean, we had what, a half million dollars for an elevator in there. That we were dead set on for a long time. And I think the board may be overly involved, but, you know, okay. Spend a little extra money on bleachers, cut the elevator out. I mean, there was a lot of board involvement in that project. But that project was pretty well defined as Ternan Center, sound system, lighting, floor, bleachers. And that all kinda came together with some tweaks. I think that was about, Karen might disagree, but about the right level of board involvement. Uh, maybe a little overhanded, but but, you know, we we made some changes along the way. The bond projects have kinda gone round and round for, we we, I mean, not going there, but I think I would not have. I would not set this policy based on that experience.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
So it feels like this, this whole discussion and this development was based on board members feeling like. The process, there needed to be and steps followed. So if we don't do this, I just wanna make sure we don't come back to them.
You want your capital project planned as ten years?
Right.
And you do it every year.
Right.
That that in and of itself tells you the dynamic of what you're dealing with. And planning, and particularly if you're gonna have controlled project financing now, you're gonna be dealing with. The questions either in a referendum or even petition or monitoring process put on a bi-annual basis. Because they have to be voted on in a general election year. So there's been a lot of, a lot of legislative input into this process. And I think to react to A, our experience and B, the general phenomenon that Senate Bill One has created without giving the legislature a chance to at least. Look at it. I don't, I'm not gonna predict or undo anything subsequent in a short session, but to at least look at it or second look at it. I I tend to agree, but I I don't know if we need to let our experience create a policy that may or may not be what we need in the long run.
To Kristen's point, I think, I mean, our, the conduit between administration and the board is the superintendent. And I think that, while not doing policy, I mean, we we, we, that is where the the bond needs to be strengthened. And then, you know, these are the expectations for the board when projects come. I don't think we necessarily need policy, but. But we need to make sure that he understands what our expectations are as administration. I mean, that's where the flow needs to happen both ways. And I think to some degree, cause there were some key personnel changes, uh, we 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 kind of got behind the eight ball a little bit. But uh, but I think moving forward, I would anticipate a much improved process.
This would be good to include with like a new member, also a new board member, like a packet. Like here's, you know, like, I was wondering, how, what's my role as a board member?
Now that.
Maybe there needs to be a.
And maybe it ought to be tweaked with that, with that use in mind.
Yes.
Or it could be.
Board norms, don't we have that or something?
It's a belief.
But I think as a board too, it's, if one of us just wants to do something, right, what is our process? Which I think we're usually pretty good, like throwing it out there, and then. Can't vote on if we are interested in it, we can bring it up and take it to the superintendent.
You have the right, under the open door law, you have the right to lobby your fellow board members, and that's not considered violation of the open door law. To meet with one or two, in, or in groups of one or two, to talk about whether you could support this idea. That, that's totally permissible to. To allow, to allow idea of that.
Yeah, building level leaders, admin can also go to the superintendent and lobby it. But I think that, that has to be the conversation before plans or ideas are really time spent. But that's, I don't want to waste money.
So I sound like we're in agreement that this won't be a policy, is that what I'm hearing, and that, but. How do we make sure this becomes part of some sort of new board member packet, or whatever it is that. Probably needs established.
I think that the way you could do that, and I'm not saying that you could, so typically, um. Like, the finance person meets with new board members, and we could put it in the purchasing. Because there's already purchasing policy and construction is a part of it, it's very generic and it's more general. But um, I think that what you could do is just put it as a part of. That whole like training day and make sure that that's a topic that I've heard, is construction and bonding. Because it's a natural part of the budget process, it's a natural part of your taxing unit, as far as what financial. Determinations the board controls and has to make decisions on. And so I think that it could just be a natural flow with that, the expectations of this is what you should see when bond issuance comes. And these are the things that you should ask, or you'll be voting on, and what your role is versus what the role of administrator is. And making sure that you have the information to make those decisions, um, that's just a thought that.
Well, I mean, we got a new board member coming, I think with December. I think this would be a good time to put that.
Ain't you ready to get that soon, Mike?
I am, me too, I was thinking January thirty first.
I've met with most of, like, when, when I was in finance, I met with most of you when you came on, and so it's not all of you, I think. So that was one of the things that um, prior presidents required. And so it's just something that works really well, and it seamlessly integrates, um, I know that on the, the finance side of. Um, things with, like, example, with IASBO training, it is a required course. In order to be a part of the certification program, so I think it would make sense that the board has that information as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, because obviously, I mean, when I came on, if we didn't jump right into the bond, I probably would still be in the race. So I think we've been able to slowly connect the dots, because we're going through it, which is good, but if we're not actively. Have a bond, but it's good to, so they can. Use that information when we get there.
Okay, sounds like we have a good plan, um, so we will omit that policy and move it. Okay, next policy fifty six oh five, suspension expulsion of students with disabilities. Looks like there's one addition, which is required by Indiana code, that's reference and cross-reference with attendance there. Um, any questions about that addition? And we will add that and move on. Next is policy fifty six ten, which is suspensions and expulsions of students. That also has the addition of the required Indiana code, there are a few. Um, options, on the second. Beginning with the second page, no, yes.
Actually, there's, there's one under A on the second page, oh.
The beginning of the second page, yes, um, student will receive credit. For any assignment or schoolwork during the period of the student's suspension. The student shall or shall not be allowed to make up missed test quizzes when the student returns to school. This is if a student is suspended, that they be able to make up the missed test or quizzes. What, what's our current policy on that? Okay, thank you. So do we want them to be able, we're saying that they can make up assignments and schoolwork for the period that they're gone. Are they also able to make up tests and quizzes? This is a student who's been suspended because of disciplinary action or some sort of expulsion. This is separate from school attendance.
You know, we don't want them to fail, they've got to have a window.
We have, we have, they would be, shall be allowed.
I'm in favor of allowing them, I've given grace. Yes.
Teacher to some degree, but it's nice to do for the kids. The bound. Right. Adding another. Yeah.
Is everyone okay if we put shall on that? Okay, we'll move on to further down, it looks like there's.
Actually, I have a quick question.
Oh, yes.
If they allow one, that's not allowed, like.
Case by case.
I don't know if we could do case by case, I mean, I, I feel like that would get us in trouble.
Opens up the kind worms.
Like, why did this, why?
They're saying it should be a will.
It just said suspended, and you have to go suspended, and it's for different things, but it goes suspended. It's shall.
Take the test because he's trying to get his grade, and the kid be like, whatever, and never takes it, and we're saying either kid has to take it, and the other kid just. I mean, it just seems undue.
I think it has to be construed that they will give them the opportunity.
Yes, they've got to be given the opportunity. Like, you can't say you can't take that, but you can't.
Yeah, so shall, this, okay.
The ownership should be on the kid, really, so.
Yeah.
It's not likely to be held back, so.
The next item, if a student brings a deadly weapon to the corporation, is found to possess the weapon. Uh, may be expelled for a period of time, but not more than one calendar year unless the superintendent reduces the punishment. It was a choice of shall be expelled, but it looks like that's taken out, so maybe it's.
I, I looked at uh, previous policy, and that's what we had.
We have may?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Is that fifty seven seventy, I'll see, which policy is it?
We're so, are you just asking which one we're in now?
Yeah.
Oh, suspensions and expulsions of students, that's okay, and we're on page two, where it now, it has.
I think may is better.
The student may be expelled.
More flexible.
You guys interrupt me, if not, I'm gonna keep going, uh, page three. The board has voted not to hear any expulsion appeals, I think we've been pretty uh, consistent on that, not to, to. Remove our involvement. And we authorize the superintendent to develop administrative guidelines um, for students in lieu of suspension or expulsion, which we have. The next, we have to select one of the options, which is either the principal shall report um, expulsions to the. Bureau Motor Vehicles, or the principal may, or the principal will not. So we requiring that the principal let the BMV know according to the laws. Um, if the student is withdrawn or seeks to withdraw from school in an effort to circumvent the second, a second. Suspension or expulsion, avoiding, they're trying to avoid losing their driver's license. So the principal will do it, they may do it, or they shall, they will not do it. That's our choice.
I think I would have kind of followed him and every sentiment, I think. I, I don't think you, you want to put the principal in determining whether I'm, I'm going to report Johnny, but I'm not going to report Jim, you know.
Right, I think we need shall.
We need either one of the three, I don't know.
That's what we had previously.
We did, everyone comfortable with the shall, okay?
I don't know, I mean, that seems like an alarming burden, I mean, is it law said they have to, right?
No.
I mean, do they actually lose their license?
I mean, it's like the double jeopardy.
I think we looked at one, it does, they do, so this is saying a kid who then is trying to get around that, so they withdraw. From school instead of, because they don't want the principal to, so they're trying to find a loophole to avoid losing their license.
No.
Yeah. And shall, okay, we'll move on to policy twenty four fourteen. The reproductive health and family planning, human sexuality, and I know that Stacy was kind enough to provide us with the Indiana code exactly. I know that we had requested, like, what does the code actually require? And he provided that for us. Looks like points, and I'm not directly looking at Stacy, you're correct me, but A, B, C, D, and E are part of the Indiana code that have to be. Is that correct?
Um, let me, first page. I'm gonna pull up the Indiana code then.
I think A, B, and C have been in there, I think D and E were.
Require a teacher to teach abstinence, so I know it looks like the first A is a requirement. Two is a require, uh, B is a requirement of Indiana code, C. Yeah, I think they all are, they might not.
What if we just say, as required by Indiana code, unless the code, and take the language out? Does that meet the letter of the law?
Hate this language, I, like, it's required, but I'm still, I don't know, if we have it spelled out, it's just so.
One sided.
I, I think it's, it's problematic, I think, when board policy starts getting into content or curriculum. I mean, I think that's kind of what you want professionals to be involved in, but this is the high end of government telling you what that curriculum should include.
Back to John's question, do we have to spell it all out? In our policy, or can we reference that, can we just reference?
I think you can reference it, I mean, I, I think this, I think the statute puts in what the content of the. Curriculum component needs to include, and it's not necessarily exhaustive, I mean, it can include other things, but I think. And I, I can back it up, because it's been a while, we talked about this a couple months ago, I think, like I said. I think A, B, and C were in the prior version, and then D and E got added, but I don't know what the rationale was for that.
That covers us for future changes too.
And they say it's required by state law, I see blah, 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 and then just go to the next paragraph.
This is like we're alienating kids or kids with different parents, you know, different families. Home life situations, and making them feel less than, if talking about, like, wedlock, come on. Um, but yeah, I would prefer to just reference, since we have to do that.
You think that applies, Stacy?
Sure.
So we keep the, we keep the first, we keep the first paragraph that looks like, and then we reference, we take out. A through E and reference Indiana code twenty dash thirty dash five dash thirteen. And then, oh, I'm just looking at the, then after E, are we keeping that, I'm just trying, yes, I hope we need to keep that, or.
You have to.
Yes.
That was a big piece of the statute, we allow pre- and all of them, including the review.
Okay, so the only part we're taking out are A through E, and we're referencing the Indiana code?
Yes.
Does that work for everyone?
That works for me.
Yeah.
Um, the other, a couple other things, one, um, Ms. Marker just pointed out that we started in grade five. Um, I don't think, at least in twenty thirty five thirteen, it doesn't say. What grade we start that in, um, I can look through.
Where, can you?
Um, yeah.
Same structure in the first paragraph? Okay.
We leave that.
Yeah, but she's saying we don't start it in fourth grade.
We started in fifth grade.
Sure, fifth grade.
Why do we start in fifth grade instead of fourth grade? Kids are developing.
When I went through my education classes, back in the day.
Yeah.
They told us, we didn't teach our kids about, about these things. By the time they were in second grade, then they were going to learn it from another kid.
Yeah.
And so.
But I guess that's another question, um, but you're saying we don't do fourth grade, so we. We probably shouldn't have in our policy.
Talk about child abuse that we've learned, elementary grade levels. The stage.
So change that. Dick Tiran taught me about it in sixth grade, so. What's that?
And, and square dance.
And square dance, that's exactly right, once a year, he came by, went to.
So our health education curriculum doesn't talk about sexually transmitted diseases at the fourth grade. Okay, so we need to change that to fifth grade.
Change that to five, and then, as, um, I like, um, Mr. Weber, he said, as required by state law. And then quote Indy, or, and then just put the reference Indiana code twenty dash thirty dash five dash thirteen.
Yes.
Period, and then eliminate everything after that.
Just.
Down to the corporation.
Yes, that's right, okay, great.
And that'll be, uh, and then everything else is fine that we have in there, and I, has that gone through first reading, or?
I don't believe it is.
I think it went first reading.
I think it may have, so maybe.
We'll, we'll research that.
Give it a second, second reading and then we'll like, brought it back.
Okay, next policy fifty seven seventy one, search and seizure. This um, changes some words, it looks like some plurals to singulars, takes out. And then we have an addition. Uh, discussing if the student, uh, about. Material, like if the student has passed away or transferred or dropped out, that the parents. Uh, have the right to come and collect the property, their property, the student's property. I'm assuming that's referenced in code, the new Indiana code that's referenced there. And some terminology changes with date and time at the bottom of that policy. Any questions on this policy? Okay, stand with the corrections, Stacy. Yes.
It'll be third reading, I'm sorry, the, the last one. On this, uh, human sexuality.
Yes. Okay, that's fine.
Well, there was the action in the middle detectors.
I put in, I, I put in what's currently there.
Who does the metal detecting, don't we have the wands?
We do, so, but I never used them, so we would have the SRO, and, um, Mr. Cross can correct if I'm wrong, and I think it, it says it in here. If there was an SO, SRO in my building, I would, could ask them to do a search, and they could conduct that search for me. Um, they couldn't do it on their own, like, they couldn't initiate it, but if I asked them to help me out with that, I believe they.
Well, your standard is, is one of reasonable suspicion, theirs is one of legal probable cause, is law enforcement officers, so that, that's, that's the distinction.
And that's assuming they're trained in a proper use and. Don't we have like fifty metal detect wands floating around, it's like.
We have both. Yeah, there's one at test, one at Dennis, and a couple in high school.
Um, that does reflect what we had before.
Oh, okay, from high school, yeah.
Okay, okay, so that policy will stand as the corrections are here.
And I believe that'll be first reading, so.
Yes, I think so, okay, and then we had a request, um, to discuss facilities philosophy. To charge or not to charge, does it need to be a policy, or is it just this administration, administrative guideline? Any discussion about that?
What was that again?
Uh, facilities philosophy, whether they charge or not, does it need to be a school board policy, or should it remain administrative guideline?
Yeah, Dr. Ryan. Kind of missed us to get enough of the executive committee. Hey, guys.
Are we at time, though?
Yeah.
We are, I was thinking maybe we could discuss a, a future policy. I was thinking maybe we could discuss it at a future policy meeting.
Okay. Yes, we can move that to our next policy meeting. And the future, first of all, thank you, Stacy, for organizing this. And I really appreciate the notes that you send, the emails you send ahead, which give us all some good background information and pulling key partners together. So thank you, Stacy, appreciate you.
Yeah, emails easier to navigate.
I thought it would be, and so I'll, I'll try to do that from now on and give you that information. And we didn't make that part of public comment, I mean, it's up to you if we do that or not. Like, like my sheet of what I, kind of what I explained everything. I left that up for you, but it's up to you whether you want.
Then, I don't necessarily think that private notes need to go to everyone. I mean, if someone disagrees.
And, and then the other, I believe we're up for, and Miss Selsma can correct if I'm wrong, I believe there's going to be a September update coming too, am I right on that?
Yes.
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 So there will be more policies updated.
Oh, okay, okay, great, okay. And you had mentioned, which I think is a great idea, is, I mean, we will want the AI discussion. There were some teachers who want to be part of the discussion, but because of our policy time. So I would suggest we wait on the AI policy till our, not bring it before the board, but we have another policy meeting that's four o'clock, so that if the teachers want to come to add comments that they could before it comes before the board again, if that is okay with everyone. So I would suggest our next board meeting would be at four P M.
You just want to do it before a board, regular board meeting, then?
We could. Nah, I don't know if I want to do that, because that really creates a long, sorry, but my food is important to me. And I'm thinking I'm going to be here four to ten P M or whatever. So I don't know if we could stick to, Tuesdays have been good, but, I mean, I'm one person. So if you guys don't like that plan, uh, October twenty first, four P M. That's, is that fall break? Okay. And it looks like we have a meeting on October seventh at four P M. Is that?
To retrieve.
Okay, yeah. Is that right? That must be a. Yes, I'm actually gone the fourteenth out of town. What about the twenty eighth at four P M? Was that a yes? AI liked it. Yeah, how does that work for everyone, October twenty eighth at four P M?
I have a meeting at four thirty, but I can join via Zoom in the beginning.
Okay, you're okay with that. Okay. And then we, what is the best way to reach teachers who may have an interest in adding conversation to the AI?
Well, doesn't everybody email usually?
God knows. And maybe just to reach out to, and maybe I can just reach out to the teacher who came to comments to say, to the public commentary, to say this will be a conversation. And then, I don't know if there's another way to invite.
We may have our administrative guidelines completed by then, too.
Okay, that would be good, yeah. And maybe our, okay, perfect. Any other questions or comments, and other than Stacy, the next board, or next, you can add the facilities philosophy conversation would be good. And then any other, and I know we've kind of worked through all the other.